Out with me, please. Heavenly Father, we just ask you tonight to be with all of us here as we make decisions that affect the entire student body, faculty and staff of Stanley County Schools. And Lord, we just ask you to give us wisdom as we make these decisions so they would be pleasing in your eyes. We ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
To the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on your agenda is the election of a vice chairman, which I know may be for a short amount of time till our December meeting, but we need to elect a vice chair. So nominations are now open for a vice chair of Stanley County Board of Education. Ms. Watson has been nominated as vice chair. Are there any further nominations?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Carla Poplin, please.
Okay, I have Ms. Carla Poplin nominated for vice chair.
Madam Chair, I make a motion and we close nominations.
Okay, the nominations. I need a second in order to, okay. So we have a second to close our nominations. So a motion has been made for Ms. Vicky Watson, a nomination, and a nomination for Ms. Carla Poplin for vice chair. I think that all of you have at your place a secret ballot. So if you would at this time, just vote for either Ms. Vicky Watson or Ms. Carla Poplin, please. And then if we can pass these to Dr. Dennis, we'll tabulate. So the vice chair for Stanley County Board of Education is Ms. Carla Poplin. The next part on your agenda is the consent agenda. This is for the approval of the minutes from the October 5th regular meeting and the special called meeting on October 21st, as well as the continuance of our optional mask mandate. You've all had a chance to look over those minutes. If there are no corrections, may I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion we approve this consent agenda.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Poplin. May I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Graves. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, Madam Chair. Will we be getting a COVID update every month? Oh, you're about to do that? I didn't see it on here. Okay, thank you very much.
So what we have is the county is actually, sorry about that. The county number is actually down since the last time we voted to 6.2%. We have an influx of quarantines, though, in our schools, and we do have some positives. It's not a strong up trend at this moment, but we are a little higher. I have 21 students positive at all schools and seven staff positive, and currently I have 282 students quarantined at all schools with 23 staff.
Does that answer your concerns, Mr. Graves?
It does. I did have a question about vaccinations, and I figured that was, this is the time to ask the question during the, because there isn't any other area. This would be part of, I guess, our COVID response plan, so I had some questions around that. Maybe the superintendent could answer it. I understand that we have a program where we're allowing students who maybe didn't have their vaccinations in time for the beginning of the school to get their vaccinations. I'm talking about in general here.
You're talking general vaccinations?
General vaccinations, because as of maybe yesterday, there had been no approvals around COVID vaccinations. So that's a second question. But, so we do have a plan that allows the students to get access to vaccines.
Yes, so the students have until the 30th of November to at least have an appointment to get the vaccines.
Right.
We had a conversation with the Health Department around trying to put something together so that they can come in and get these vaccines, especially, you know, especially we got a lot of kindergartners that are on vaccines right now, to get them so that they're in compliance.
So my question is, what I want to make sure is that the board has an opportunity to vote on, discuss and vote on any vaccination activities that would relate to COVID vaccines before anything like that is put in place. So, in other words, let me be very specific. There were some concerns raised that we might include once approved COVID vaccinations on school property. And so I just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity as a board to consider that and vote on that before.
Well, I'll tell you, thus far, with any vaccinations that have happened on our property, we've only given them our property, they've been run by the Health Department. So Stanley County Schools has not actually promoted anything. But yeah, before we would ever bring a plan to do something like that, we would always bring it before the board. We would never act as an option.
Regardless of who would be administering the vaccine?
That's what the board wants, yes, sir.
Okay, well, that's what I want. Do we need to make a motion on that?
I think you're fine with it.
Okay, all right.
Doesn't approve.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate it.
Does that answer things, Mr. Graves? Thank you. Is there anyone else that has any questions? All right, we've had a first, we've had a motion, we've had a second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Okay, the consent agenda has been approved. The next part on your agenda is committee reports. The first one is instructional program. That's myself, and I do not have a report at this time. Next person is facilities, Mr. Graves.
Chair, I just have one item that I need to bring to the board from the committee, and that is I need a approval. I don't think we need to have a second on this, but I think we do need it. Yeah, because it's coming out of committee, but we're recommending to the full board that we allow North Stanley High School to move forward with their foul ball netting project for the softball field. They currently have, one side has netting. This would be a project to finish the other side, which is already fully funded, so.
Thank you. So since this is coming out of the facilities committee and a recommendation to the board, I would just like to go over one more time. This is for the approval of North Stanley High School to move forward with the foul ball netting for their softball field. All board members in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that has passed. Thank you, Mr. Graves.
Thanks.
Finance, Mr. Sorenson.
Nothing reported this time.
Thank you. Personnel, Ms. Watson. Thank you. Ms. Poplin, I know you always have something. Policy?
Yes, I have a list of policies that will be tabled for 30 days, and I'll just go ahead and read those out for you. 3460 is graduation requirements. 5,000, school and community. New policy, 5,008 is automated phone and text messages. 5010, parent organizations. 5020, visitors to the schools. 5022, registered sex offenders. 5025, provision of drugs and alcohol. Policy 5040, news media relations. New policy, 5100, relationship with other governmental agencies. 5110 is relationship with county commissioners. 5120, relation with law enforcement. 5210, distribution and display of non-school material. 5200, collections and solicitations. New policy, 5230, participation in research projects. And policy 5240, advertising in the schools are all to be tabled for the next 30 days.
Thank you. So board members, you have a chance to look over all these policies that will be tabled for 30 days until our next meeting. Thank you, Ms. Poplin.
Also in there is advertising in the schools, 5240, that has been updated.
Okay, okay. Thank you. The next item on your agenda is curriculum and instruction, and this is Dr. Amy Blake Lewis.
Good evening, everyone. I have two items for you this evening. The first is a summary of school improvement plans that were presented throughout the month of October, and several of you as board members participated in those reviews as our schools came in and presented their plans to you. So what I've provided you this evening is just a quick summary of the major goals of each of those plans. And North Carolina general statute does require board approval on school improvement plans, so I do need action on this item tonight.
So board members, I know that in your packet, you've been able to look at each school's school improvement plan, and then many of us, I know that we tried to sit in those presentations, and what an excellent job from all of our schools and administrators and those serving teachers and others that are serving on school improvement plans. I know a lot of work goes into that, and it was just outstanding to be able to hear many of these. We got lots of good things happening.
Absolutely.
So board members, you've had a chance to look at that. I need a motion to approve the 202122 school improvement plan.
I make a motion that we approve the 202122 school improvement plan as presented.
We have a, we have a motion by Mr. Graves, a second, by Ms. Poplin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't know that there's any questions or comments, but if anyone has a comment that you would like to make, please do so.
I would just like to say real quick, it was a joy and a pleasure to hear those school improvement plans from the several schools that I attended. Stanley County citizens need to wake up and realize we've got some fantastic people running our schools, and they care. And it was just, I walked out of there about 10 feet off the ground, because it's hard to stay positive sometimes. Those folks are working hard, and their plans are tangible targets, and they're great plans to do the best for our kids. I was just impressed.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson.
I would just like to second what Mr. Sorenson said. I sat in on a few and highly impressed with what our sit teams and principals have come up with for the school's plans for going forward, and just really appreciate the time that they took out to explain all that to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. Any other board member that has a comment? And thank you, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, for your leadership.
Absolutely. My pleasure. I do have one other item for you this evening.
Well, let me, let us take a vote. So we've had a motion to approve the 202122 school improvement plans. We've had a second, we've had discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. And our school improvement plans for 202122 school year are approved. And now, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, early graduation?
Yes, we have a list in your packet of all of our high schools who have submitted candidates for early graduation. This is in alignment with board policy 3165, which does allow for early graduation of seniors one semester early, provided that they have met future ready course of study, which is 22 credit hours or more, or students who are in the occupational course of study, which is a specially designed program for students with disabilities who meet adapted course requirements. So you will see in your packet by school, those students who are candidates, and we just need your approval on that this evening.
School board members, you've had a chance to hear Dr. Amy Blake Lewis to look over the candidates for early graduation. We need to take action, so I need a motion to approve the early graduates.
I make a motion that we approve the list of candidates for early graduation for school year '21 and '22 as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Graves. May I have a second?
A second, the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. So we have a second. All board members in favor of approving the early graduation candidates for 202122 school year are approved. And now, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, early graduation?
Yes, we have a list in your packet of all of our high schools who have submitted candidates for early graduation. This is in alignment with board policy 3165, which does allow for early graduation of seniors one semester early, provided that they have met future ready course of study, which is 22 credit hours or more, or students who are in the occupational course of study, which is a specially designed program for students with disabilities who meet adapted course requirements. So you will see in your packet by school, those students who are candidates, and we just need your approval on that this evening.
School board members, you've had a chance to hear Dr. Amy Blake Lewis to look over the candidates for early graduation. We need to take action, so I need a motion to approve the early graduates.
I make a motion that we approve the list of candidates for early graduation for school year '21 and '22 as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Graves. May I have a second?
A second, the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. So we have a second. All board members in favor of approving the early graduation candidates for 202122 school year, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. And any comments or questions? Okay, this passes. Okay, thank you, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis. Next on your agenda is the auxiliary services. Mr. Terry Dudney.
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Dudney.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dudney. The next item on our agenda is public comments. Each month, part of our regularly scheduled board member will be set aside for our citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes. However, the public comment session will not exceed 15 minutes total. Board members, I actually have six people that signed up, and since that's only one person over, could I possibly have a motion for us to hear all six then?
Make a motion that we extend the time to include the sixth speaker, please, tonight?
Okay, motion by Mr. Graves, a second, please.
I second that motion, but that's to give each one three minutes?
Yes, still each one gets three minutes, but this gives that sixth person that's on the list an opportunity to speak.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Board members, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, so we will begin our board meeting, our public comment section. I think I've gone over everything. Just please, I just ask if you will please keep in mind, be respectful of our time of three minutes. I know that Ms. Miller, where are you? I know that you will probably keep that time, so if you're speaking and you kind of hear that little ding ding or whatever, that pretty much signifies that your time is up. And I appreciate those of you that have come out tonight and you're willing to speak before the board. The first person is Kimberly Carpenter. If you would come to the front, to the podium, please. Will you state your name for us and your position, what you do?
I am Kimberly Carpenter. I am a school bus driver for Stanley County Schools.
Okay, thank you, Kimberly. You may start.
Dr. Dennis, members of the board, I appreciate your time, I really do. I did send y'all an email. The bus drivers of Stanley County are finally uniting, and we just wanted, we just wanted to let y'all know that, yes, we need teachers, but y'all, the teachers, the schools, need us. They need, the schools need the bus drivers, need the cafeteria workers, and need the custodians, and need the TAs to keep going, to keep the schools running. And we know this, and we know that we have been protesting peacefully, or some parents have called it a strike, and I don't want to put the parents out anymore. I don't want to do that, but I don't want the schools to take advantage of the fact that we need our jobs, yeah, but don't take advantage of us just because we do need our jobs. Take note, please, and know that what we do, we do like, we like to do our jobs, but we want to be compensated more. And I spoke with Dr. Dennis yesterday, and I know he said that he can't just pull money out of his pocket. I understand that, but we're not willing to just lay down and be walked all over anymore. We want to be acknowledged, we want to be, we want it to be known that, just, just hear us. Yeah, you know, I mean, we hear about, you know, well, we need teachers, and teachers need this and that. They do, and yes, we need teachers, but you know what? The bus drivers, the custodians, and the cafeteria workers are the backbones of the schools. And we like our jobs, we do. We like our jobs very much. And there again, we would just like to be compensated a little bit more than what we're getting. We have some that aren't even making top pay as a driver. We have some that have been driving a lot of years and still aren't making what they deserve. And then we have some that haven't been given raises in several years, and we just want, we just want what we deserve. And that's, that's, that's what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. The second person to speak is Mr. Jeff Blake. And will you state your name, sir, and maybe what you do, or?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Jeff Blake. I am a concerned citizen of Stanley County, and I am here to address the board with an issue. So I will, I will read it to you. I am here as a concerned citizen in the county to talk about this strike. It is a two-part segment that I want to be on record. Part one, I believe the bus drivers do need a wage increase of $3 per hour to every bus driver, and a better benefit package to those who are not full-time but need some type of benefits. Part two, it's a two-edged sword, so everybody just be patient. Bus drivers are professionals and should represent themselves as such. Calling out, striking, is not acting in that professional manner. Leaving the kids at their bus stops in the dark and cold morning is not the way to be a professional bus driver. With that being said, an act of child endangerment was committed, which is a criminal offense. I think the bus drivers do need to be heard, but in a different type of manner. Criminal charges could be brought to the bus drivers who are neglecting these children, and it is a neglect. And with all of that, this is my final words. The welfare of the drivers is a very important issue and needs to be addressed, but the kids of Stanley County is always to come first, and I mean the kids first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. The next person is Ashley Garner. I hope I'm saying that correctly. If you'll state your name, please, and what you do.
Okay. Hello, my name is Ashley Garner. I'm a Stanley County school bus driver for many years. And what I'm here to say is that I'm a proud Stanley County school bus driver, but I'm disappointed in our county for the last four years. We have been pointed, we have been said to have a raise would have been come down the pipe. We have not got that. And I just remember when the pandemic started last year, the Stanley County school bus drivers were on the front line. We were not remote. We were on-site every day, feeding our community. I remember reaching in cars, touching people to give them food for their kids. I just remember developing a sisterhood with all the classified workers. We were there. We didn't cop out, we stood there. Some of us even got COVID. We even had a bus driver die. So I just want us to be, I don't know what the word should be, reciprocated. We need a raise. We are important. We did a peaceful protest, which is not illegal. That's how things happen. I was raised that if you don't agree with something, you stand up for what you believe. And those kids were not in danger because there was a warning of the protest. And these kids got to school somehow, but we had to let y'all know that we can't take it no more. I shouldn't have to go to Cabarrus County, Union County. There's a lady, one of my coworkers, let me know she's been driving a bus for 10 years, still making 1307. So somebody that walks off the street can come and make 1307. I'm here to represent the classified worker. Y'all need us. We just want compensation. We just want compensation, want to be treated fairly. We love the kids, maybe even more than y'all, because we're the first thing they see in the morning, the last thing they see in the evening. We wear many hats. Like, one of my coworkers pointed out, we wear many hats. We're mothers to those kids. Some of those kids don't have adequate mothers, but they got that bus driver, "Good morning, how are you doing?" Tie your shoe. Me and my coworker was my monitor, we had sawed child shoes in the winter, didn't have no socks. We bought socks, y'all. We're more than just bus drivers, we're more than just classified workers. We need y'all to support us. We need, starting pay needs to start at $16 an hour. And those people that's been here 20 years, what about, how do you compensate somebody for loyalty? I mean, they need a pay increase. It needs to be a pay increase all across the board. I'm representing the classified worker. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Garner. The next person is Ms. Kimberly Brown. The next person is, uh, Ms. Kimberly Brown. Ms. Brown, if you'll state your name and what you do.
Uh, my name is Kimberly Brown, and I am a bus driver, and I am also a classified worker. You know, we, we take a lot, we go through a lot, and the kids are just like our kids, like she said, and I, it puzzles me to see that we worked on the front line, nobody never came out there and said, "Thank you for what you do, here's a little extra on your paycheck for being on the front line through the pandemic." And we feel like that it should have been something given to us if it wasn't a couple dollars on your, on your paycheck, but we never got anything, and we never got anything from a superintendent, I know you just came, Dr. Dennis, but the past superintendents never gave us anything, we didn't know half of them, like we didn't know him until yesterday. So we just want to be heard, and we love the kids, I'm willing to go back to work and do what I need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Our next person is Mr. William Eford. And if you will state your name and what you do, please.
Yes, ma'am, my name is William Eford, I'm a school bus driver. I just wanted to reiterate, um, a point that really needs to be conveyed to the public. There were letters on all 60 school buses last Tuesday morning that gave you and the schools plenty of time to let these parents and students know that there would be a delay on Monday, I don't know if it wasn't taken seriously or not, but I don't know why we're getting blamed for that. Some stuff has been said the past several days, last Friday there was an emergency meeting called by, uh, the superintendent, the coordinator, and there was some stuff said that, um, has been said in the past, from what I understand. If something's not done about this, this will happen again, unfortunately. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Eford. The next person on our list is Ms. Patty Crump. We know you, Patty, but if you'll state your name and what your message is.
All right, thank you, my name is Patty Crump. Chairman Gibson, board members, Dr. Dennis, thank you for your time, and Chairman Gibson, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak, even though I was the sixth one, um, I think this shows, um, really good due diligence, um, on your part of connecting with the community that you all serve, so I appreciate that. Um, I do, uh, I'm coming tonight because I'm curious about, uh, the COVID money that we've received as a county, I know it's millions, like a lot of millions, um, and I know that that's over the last couple of years, um, and I know that it's gone to good use, but I'm curious about how much it is. There's a group of us, and we've talked about it, I think some people have requested it, I have requested information as well, um, but basically what I'm asking is if we could get a detailed breakdown of the COVID dollars that Stanley County Schools has received over the last couple of years, and where these dollars have been out, allocated, um, and if this is already available, I just would like for you to point me to where that might be posted on the website, I, I've looked, I haven't seen it, but I could have missed, I could have overlooked it. I also understand there are some new positions that were hired specifically for contact tracing and quarantining in order to take off those duties from our nurses, and I was wondering if these are grant-funded positions, and if they are, could you provide the name of that grant, um, and, mm, you know, just, just for transparency purposes of where that money has come from? I would like to take that information and do a little digging myself, um, and I'll be happy to report back anything that I find, because this is what I know about money, it's not free, and I know that when the government hands money, whether it's the federal government, the state government, or from the, our local government, uh, there's a string attached, and a lot of times there's a lot of strings attached, so I just want to know, I want to follow the trail, um, I think a lot of people do, we're having to do that now, we're having to be our own researchers, and we've got to be advocates to find out where this comes from, because nobody trusts anybody anymore, and we want to trust you, and I know that you want us to trust you and be trusted, so if we can work together to find out where this money is really linked to, I would like to, to have that information. Detailed report, like where every single dollar has gone and where it's come from, if that's possible, um, and then I'd like to put that out for other people, whether it's on the website, or we put it on, uh, the Stanley County Freedom Network email group, Facebook group, um, and, and while I'm up here, I do want to say I appreciate that you mentioned that about the vaccine clinics, um, I did go onto the website, and I saw that the first thing was COVID, and COVID seems to be, um, the first thing on everybody's minds right now, and I really, I don't want to criticize the website because it looks beautiful, um, but I would love to, for that not to be the first thing we see, it's like, what do you see when you walk into a store, what's advertised first, I want that to be farther in our brains, because education is what we're in business for, not healthcare, and so I don't want to blur those lines, and that's why I think it would be a really good thing for us not to have vaccine clinics in partnership with the health department on any school grounds, I think that's a slippery slope. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crump. I appreciate all of you that took the time to address the board tonight, thank you. The next part of our agenda is our superintendent's comments, Dr. Dennis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I have a few comments, first of all, um, football playoffs, we had, uh, three teams, West Stanley, South Stanley, Almoreland made the football playoffs, for some reason North Stanley did not, I still don't understand, I know the administration questioned that as well, because, uh, the last North Stanley game I saw with football, they looked like a, they looked like a team that deserved to be in the playoffs, I'm just going to say it, they looked like a great team, so, but still, kudos to them, uh, for an outstanding year, they did very well. Uh, just a reminder, um, that the day after Veterans Day is a non-instructional day, as we had, uh, as you guys had voted on earlier, and that, uh, on the 10th of this month through the 12th, I guess it is, that we have the North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Dennis. I'm going to, um, start with Dr. Leffler, please, for board comments.
I would just like everybody to thank you tonight, for everybody that had the courage to come and talk, I mean, we hear you, and we're, we're considering what you're saying, and, uh, thanks for coming, and also, thanks for still supporting our school system and our students and everybody that works for it, because, like you say, everybody in it's very important, and thank you also to the teachers and the parents, because we're still behind in our educational process because of the COVID, and hopefully, it's, it's heading down, and I hope it's gone, but it's probably not, and just keep working with the kids at home with their reading and math, which is the most important thing, and we will get through this epidemic, pandemic, whatever you want to call it, and we will get our kids caught back up, which is the most important thing. We've been bashing around COVID and several things over the last year, and now's the time to get back to the important thing, the education, and we're thankful for all of you working for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Leffler. Uh, Ms. Poplin.
Thank you. Um, I too would just like to start out by thanking, um, Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Blake, Ms. Garner, Ms. Brown, Mr. Eford, and Ms. Crump for speaking tonight, um, I really appreciated hearing, uh, what you guys had to say, um, and we are considering, um, all the things that you spoke about tonight, and, um, I just want to make a point to say it if we don't say it enough, every single staff member in every single building, on every single bus, every janitor is appreciated, um, you know, guys have had a lot, um, with COVID, as, you know, everyone has, um, but we do appreciate all that you do for, um, our students and our, and our other staff, because, you know, custodians take care of our other staff too, so, um, I also would like to, um, wish the best of luck to all of our teams playing in the playoffs, uh, so congratulations on that, and, um, guys, please do take time to, uh, I know you have to kind of do a little few things for November 12, but take the time to enjoy that day, and, um, spend a little extra time with your families, or a little extra time at home, and, uh, take that as kind of a bit of a mental health day, and, um, again, we just want to say that we appreciate all that you're doing, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. Um, Mr. Thorndson.
All right, I'll start off with, uh, thanking our speakers tonight, you know that, uh, my wife drove for 32 years for Stanley County Schools, if you're looking for empathy, you definitely have got something here. I want to point, just, I'm going to change subjects just a little bit, I often say South Stanley High School and South Stanley District has magic, and they do, so I'm going to brag on them, even though I don't work down there anymore. J.C. Noble, South Stanley Senior, won the state, won a turn, a tennis tournament or championship, we've got a state champion down there, that's the kind of magic I'm talking about, our cross-country team from South came in second in the region and is competing at the state now, and my inside sources say they got a real good shot, the kid's just got to show up, so the, the magic of South Stanley, it continues, and along those same lines, I did get to hear some SIPS, uh, school improvement plans, get excited for our kids and get excited for our schools, because there's some good things, great things going on, COVID has just kind of hung a dark cloud over everybody. Our bus drivers, our cafeteria folks, our custodians, we, we love you folks, if you know it or not, and when you contact us, it doesn't disappear into some vacuum, we talk about things, we work on things, we got a super superintendent, and, uh, I just trust him to do the things that have to be done, address that. The good Lord compelled me to say the last, the last part of my comments, I think we've lost track as a, as a society, so I'm going to talk to my, I'm going to talk to the kids directly, so if you, if it worries you, you can just move on, ignore me or whatever. I want the kids at Stanley County Schools to take off the masks, not these, these are still optional, Mom and Dad want you to wear it, you want to wear it, that's fine. No, I want the beloved students to take off the other masks, take off the mask of isolation and fear, between lockdowns and hiding behind face coverings, many of our kids are still hiding, if you have grown weary of being alone and behind that covering or isolated in your room, take off the mask, your peers need your unique character, and you will benefit from theirs. Take off the mask of apathy and laziness, it's only natural that so many of us became a little too comfortable in our cocoons, playing video games and becoming sedentary, that's the, I'm preaching to the choir, that's me too, so, take off that mask, because if there's one thing in life that life has taught me as an old man, is that time's a precious thing and it disappears quickly. I want the kids of Stanley County to hear this, join a team or a club, get involved at school, dive into your classes, find out what, what your passion is, get involved at church, take off that mask. Finally, this is for some of our kids that are struggling, I want you to take off the mask of dark thoughts or depression. Take off the mask that tells you that you aren't smart enough, good enough, athletic enough, or attractive enough, or good enough, because the mask is a lie. Take off the mask that keeps you from reaching out and telling the world who you are. Dear children, you are each unique and wondrous creations of God, and every one of you has a beautiful song to sing that the world desperately needs, there is no other like you, and there never will be, the world is in dire need of your song, so take off that mask. For those kids that may be struggling, and I know that I can feel it that they're out there, if that darkness, sadness, isolation, or self-doubt has you questioning your incredible value to humanity, reach out, reach out to a parent or a pastor, reach out to a coach or a teacher, reach out to, uh, anybody that you trust, or somebody that you trust, and you will discover just how loved and valued you all are. I can promise every student at Stanley County Schools the following, when you go to school, there is somebody there that loves you and cares about you. Some of the bus drivers are not talking about that, there's actually several someones that care and love and cherish you, so if you are sad, heartbroken, lost, or in circumstances, or simply need to hear that you truly do matter, reach out to them. Take off the masks, sweet children, take off the mask and be you, the world needs you, even if you haven't quite found your own song yet.
Thank you, Mr. Thorndson. I agree with all that you said, and that's kind of hard to follow now, um, so, Ms. Watson.
Well, I don't know how you follow that. Thank you, sir. Thank you all for, um, coming out and speaking tonight, and we do hear you, um, and I want to thank everybody that is in this school system for all that they do, everybody's worked really, really hard and are still doing it, and we do, really, really do appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Mr. Graves.
Thank you. You know, it's interesting, um, I, I grew up in Maryland, and, um, my bus driver, his name was George Spriggs, and he owned Spriggs Bus Service, Bus Company, he actually was an outfielder for the Pittsburgh Pirates, and he played for the Kansas City Royals, so it was pretty cool having a celebrity, um, who was a professional athlete, who was actually not only owned the bus company, um, and you can look him up on Wikipedia, George Spriggs, um, Pittsburgh Pirates, um, and, uh, it was, it was, because not only was he a professional and a, and an athlete and a celebrity, but that isn't why we all liked him, it just happened to be, that was a thing we would talk about, that, oh, yeah, Mr. Spriggs, he used to play baseball in the major leagues, but to him, he was a person that we saw every single day, picked us up, dropped us off, um, occasionally, uh, drove a little fast, which we were all excited about, and you could tell when you're a kid, you know when you're going to pass a mailbox, and some, uh, a, a tree, and a certain car, you pretty much know, uh-oh, we're getting past this stuff a lot faster than we did yesterday, he must be in a hurry, um, although we never discouraged him, but, I mean, I, he was my bus driver the entire time I was in elementary school, um, so I had him, he, he was an influence in my life, uh, I would say a good influence, for longer than any teacher I had in, in my entire education, I knew him more than any principal, any teacher, he was the one constant, um, and his brother, who occasionally would sub, uh, who also drove a bus, um, and that family owns a coach service now in, in Southern Maryland, but, uh, and I was thinking about this, because I'm like, you know, he really was the one person I knew more than anyone else in my entire time in school, um, and incidentally, when I was in middle school, and even my freshman year in high school, when I was still riding, I was riding on a Spriggs bus, um, and, and sometimes he was driving, and it was always fun when he was the driver, and you'd get on the bus and see a familiar face, and he wanted to know what you were up to, um, and so, I, I, please, I'm just saying what everybody here is all, is thinking back to the bus drivers they knew when they were kids, because they had probably had the same experience, and particularly when you talk about the bus drivers that you've spent your entire career here in Stanley County, that's true for you, um, you have probably been the one person that those students have seen in South Stanley, or North Stanley, or West Stanley, more than anybody else, um, in their educational lives, so, um, I want you to know that we, we definitely hear you, and we've heard you for years, when, when the whole situation happened with, uh, with busing, um, before, and the re, the rerouting and, and efficiencies, and we had all these reports, and people coming to talk before the board and the previous board, um, it was something that was discussed, um, frequently, and in closed session, talking about payrolls and things like that, um, and it's, it's tough, because you're right, you, um, uh, you haven't been mentioned- And it's, it's tough, because you're right, you, you haven't been mentioned enough, and the reality is, is that every single person inside of Stanley County Schools, as a, as an employee, certainly is not taken for granted, although it may seem like that sometimes if you're not directly referred to. But at the end of the day, I want you to know that the superintendent, even the previous superintendent as well, but the current superintendent, Mr. Dudney, and their staff, they're working, and they're trying to figure out how we can help all of the employees, including the bus drivers, because at the end of the day, like you said, you're the kids, you're the people picking the kids up and bringing them to school. You are the front line, and you realize how much of a big deal we made about it when we couldn't find bus drivers two years ago and three years ago. And I would say that you're absolutely right. When, when we all went remote, y'all didn't go remote, y'all were dropping, I mean, kids would not have eaten if it was not for the, the child nutrition workers and volunteers, many teachers that weren't teaching, going into the kitchens, preparing the food, handing it off to y'all, and the volunteers that rode with you to make sure that these kids ate. And Stanley County was acknowledged nationally for the work done to feed kids, and that couldn't happen without y'all. Y'all were the ones giving them the food, so you deserve all the credit for that. The child nutrition workers, and the board even back then said, y'all deserved all the credit. Sometimes the board got credit for it, but didn't deserve it, it was all you guys. So we, we hear you, and we appreciate it, and the sad thing is that it gets to the point where you feel so frustrated that, you know, you feel like you're not being heard. You are, it's just certain things can't, certain things take certain steps, and that can't always be public. And so just understand that, but, but everybody supports you, please know that. And so I, I do want to thank the, the speakers tonight and, and Ms. Patty Crump, former board member. So I just thank you guys for coming out tonight, I appreciate it very much. And, and also to Dr. Amy Blake Lewis and her staff for putting together that school improvement plan. It's a ton of hard work, you guys always knock it out of the park, so thank you for that, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Mr. Dustin Lisk, and some of you still are seeing a new face up here with Mr. Lisk, he's our, our newest board member, and again, I welcome him here. So, Mr. Lisk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you spoke a little too early, because I have to follow Anthony. But no, thank you to all the bus drivers. I rode the bus K-8 every year, so you're right, we stood out on cold mornings, got picked up and taken home in the afternoon, so absolutely hear you. Thank you to some of the folks that, that I know in this room. Thank you to the board for welcoming me and to the public. I think we all want the system to be more competitive, up and down the chain. Everybody, it, it takes all of the cogs to make the wheel go round. Without the bus drivers, the kids don't get to schools. Without the teachers, the kids don't get taught. Without the cafeteria workers, the kids don't get fed. And so, you know, without the administration, it would be hard to keep our kids safe and, and the wheel moving. So I get it, I hear you, I would echo the comments of some of the board members, that it does not go unnoticed. You know, as a new member to the board, I can assure you that we are working hard on behalf of this community, and we want to see progress, responsible progress, that meets the needs of this community and, and what the community wants. So thank you to all, and I'm looking forward to, to serving you.
Thank you, Mr. Lisk. Dr. Dennis, you have one?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I did forget to congratulate the West Stanley cross-country team as they moved on to state finals, and I looked at the results online, and it was quite impressive, so apologize for forgetting about that. And again, like everyone else said, I just want to thank all of our personnel for everything they do, day in and day out, and all the challenges they've overcome, and everybody for coming to speak today.
Thank you, and, and I have one or two things. I know I probably shouldn't talk, but I'm going to. I want to piggyback off Mr. Sorenson. You know, you're talking about people, our children, and, and their needs that they have right now, and, and who they can even go to and, and talk to. But when I look in the back of this room, I see law enforcement officers, SRO officers, I see Ms. Jennifer Flo, our safety director. You know, I was, I was always taught, as a little girl, that, you know, you can, you can always go to a policeman, you can always go to your law enforcement, and they are there to, to help you. And I want to thank those of you that are here, I appreciate all that you do. Thank you to, to all of you that came out tonight and spoke. Congratulations, Ms. Poplin, as our newly elected board vice chair, and congratulations and a thank you to Dr. Dennis for being here. It is his one-year anniversary of being here as our superintendent of Stanley County Schools, so, thank you. Our, next on the agenda, our next date and location of our board meeting is Tuesday, December the 7th, in this room, the Jean McIntyre Room, at 7:00 PM. At this time, may I entertain a motion for the board to enter into closed session for school improvement plans, North Carolina General Statute 115C-105.27. Personnel matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A6. Student matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A1. Attorney-client matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A3. Could I please have a motion?
Make a motion, go into closed session?
Okay, a motion by Ms. Poplin to go into closed session, a second, please. I would like to call the board back into open session. I'm going to turn over the personnel agenda to Dr. Dennis.
Make a motion, the board approves Section 2 of the personnel report. Please present.
Okay, I need a motion to approve Section 2.
Motion to approve Section 2.
By Ms. Poplin, second. By Mr. Graves and Ms. Watson. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Okay, so the personnel, Section 2, has been approved. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
By Ms. Poplin, a second. By Mr. Graves, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We are adjourned. Thank you, thank you, guys.